All right. Welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Pam, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Abraham to give the invocation and Commissioner Galt to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for today. It was a beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunities that you put before us. We pray that through your spirit, we choose the right path. Father, we thank you for this Thanksgiving season. We thank you for the blessings that we have in our life. We thank you for our children. We pray over them. We pray over our -- and ask you continue to watch over our employees during this Thanksgiving season. We are so blessed as a community and as a nation. We pray that we all keep that in mind as we gather together day after tomorrow and sit down and give thanks. These things we ask in your shewer's name. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, could you get the doors or somebody get the doors?
Okay, Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. We know that we have a great Parks Department. And we're very fortunate. They oversee many, many things, but it's very obvious that it's a top-notch department. And I think you've heard me say that the two most important things in Paducah is to have industry, new jobs come to your community, and then have a good quality of life so people will have something to do and so they can enjoy your -- our community. And our Parks Department definitely add to our quality of life with so many things from the skateboard park to the disc golf to the Greenway Trail, and it goes on and on and on. They were able by the Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society to get a couple of awards. I believe it was last week, Mark. And there's two of them here. Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society won the Outstanding Program for the Program of Bikes on Broadway or an Outstanding Contribution to the Leisure Profession 2012. So then we also have, and I'll go ahead and announce both of these, we have the Outstanding Department Class One to Paducah Park Service for Outstanding Contributions to the Leisure Profession. So, Mark, to you and your team, we want to say congratulations, and we'd like to hear from you at this time.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And it truly is a team effort, and that team starts with the commission, mayor and commission, as you all provide us with the funds, and we do the best we can with it to provide quality recreation and park activities for the citizens of the community and the region. And that's what we were tasked with, when I was tasked with, when I came onboard over 11 years ago. Doesn't seem like 11 years ago, but it's been a great run for 11 years, and I hope it goes for close to that for me the rest of the way. But I've got a great team. Amy Clark is the Recreation Superintendent. Ed Sanders is covering for Les Evans, who is -- Ed is a park maintenance supervisor. And we've really stepped up to the plate and done a -- had a great job this year. The Outstanding Department Award, number one, and Class One is for any department in the state that is over 15 employees. And so that includes Louisville, Lexington, all the big dogs. And so we're really proud of that award. The program, Bikes on Broadway, we couldn't do it without the help of volunteers and Martha and Hutch over at Bike World, who really helped get it going and gave us the impetus to get that program going. And it's just been, you know, there's been times when Amy and the folks have had 300 people out there. And it's a fun day. And that's basically what we're all about, is to make sure that your leisure time, that you have quality recreation opportunities. And I think we're going to be right up for it next year with the addition of the dog park, with the expansion of the Greenway Trail as it's going forth. And I think we'll be right up there in the mix again next year.
Yeah. Well, congratulations. It is my honor as mayor to present these to you all. Mark, I'll present you with the Class One and Bikes on Broadway. Should've had you up there with them, Doc Heideg, as much work as you do.
It's a small percentage of what this park does.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we appreciate the work you do also. All right. At this time, we have a presentation. Ken Cantor from the Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority. Ken, good to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some fire handouts here.
Okay. Yeah, just, I've got, I've got one. I think it's the same one.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, just for a refresher, my name is Ken Cantor. I've been with the Paducah-McCracken County Riverport since 1993, and I've been its executive director for the last 12 years. And it's my honor tonight to bring some good news to the commission. I appreciate the opportunity, the invitation that you extended to me to come and make this announcement. Over the last six years, the Riverport has been studying its options and its capabilities as well as our future. And that certainly has included all of the discussion of the container-on-barge movements, the opening of the newly modernized Panama Canal. And we've been on the verge of making this announcement. Things had to be right. And tonight, I'm here to tell you that, as you already know, that we are embarking on the largest single investment the Riverport has ever made and the largest expansion the Riverport has ever made. In the name of economic development, we are spending $4 million to install a new tower crane at our facility. Just a little bit of background, the crane we currently have, the blue crane near my office, most of you have been by for a tour, and, but the blue crane will be replaced. That is a 20-ton crane that is 37-years-old. It is being replaced with a new one that will lift 45 tons. And the physical appearance will look similar, but the new crane will be 30 feet taller and be 40 to 50 feet longer in boom length. And that will give us the ability to handle not only containers when they come, but any heavy lifts that come that are greater than 20 tons. We view this as a good first step. We've made, we made the decision several years ago to try to get federal grants to help us with this through the Tiger Grant Program. We applied three times. We were denied three times. And rather than wait for the potential of another Tiger Grant, we decided just go ahead and proceed. So I appreciate our Board of Directors, the confidence and the foresight they have in our capabilities. I sent you a letter back in August, sort of giving you the hint that we were ready to do this. Some of the background work has been that we've already had a muscle study, and we passed. We've already been issued a Corps of Engineers permit. We've already hired a design team, W.R. Coles, out of Nashville. And we will be going out for bid for both the crane and a new marine sail, which will be required, probably the 1st of January. We're hoping that one year from now, we'll be having our ribbon cutting. And hopefully, we can have a little food like we used to at our picnics at that ribbon cutting. It's an exciting time. It's going to bring new opportunities. It's going to bring new challenges. But the Riverport has always been a player in the economic development attempts that have been made over the years in donating money and being partners and helping as partners on projects that did come to town. And what we're doing will not only take borrowed funds, which have been approved, it'll take most of our funds, and we're asking for the city and the county each to consider an investment of $100,000 somewhere near the end of the project, which will be late next summer. And that investment would help us complete the project in a way that it was intended to be, whether that be for proceeding with our attempts to get a foreign trade zone. It would also allow us to possibly purchase some of the necessary equipment that will be required on the crane to handle the containers. We would need some flexibility in that, but would certainly come back to the commission at that time with a detail of what we will be using the funds for. Made the same presentation last week to the county fiscal court, and we just feel good that hopefully with our track record and our growth over the years, that both the city and the county will view us as a good investment.
Ken, why don't you give the commission just a real brief description of your sales and sort of the volumes of business that you do there? Just ballpark.
Ah, the most impressive number to begin with, I guess, is that we do approximately 1 million tons a year of product. And that's both off a barge, onto truck, onto rail, off-rail. So if you keep that number in mind, a million. Our revenues are generally around 2.3 million. We handle some low-dollar volume products. We handle natural river sand, which is a $4.50 retail price. And our portion of that is not very much, but it's a good volume of business. It's 175,000 tons a year. We handle petroleum coke. We handle fertilizers. We handle limestone, all of which you'll see on the bulkyard up where you go onto the conveyor at Federal Materials. At our general cargo dock, where this crane will be going, is where we handle the things you can count, the coils of steel, the bundles of rebar, the cylinders from Honeywell. And those kinds of things you can count is where we handle that, and that's where the containers would come in. And that's where we're missing the boat now because we just don't have the capability of lifting those containers. They will probably weigh in the order of 27 to 30 tons each, and there will be about 75 to 77 of them on a barge if it's fully loaded. The barges that are in the marine system now are capable of bringing those containers, no special equipment. You've heard this story before, as we've attended the Panama Canal seminar here and the other things. But Paducah is uniquely located to take full advantage of that traffic coming north. Unfortunately for the Upper Mississippi, even as we speak, talk of closing it for several months, we're getting calls to handle products through our facility that can't go up the Upper Mississippi due to the drought conditions and the withholding of the water from the Missouri River. So we are well-positioned strategically to handle a lot of volume, and this is just going to be one thing that will enable us to handle things more efficiently without breakdown times, and really look forward to it.
Well, I think the timing is with you on, when the time comes that you're requesting the money, obviously, this will have to go through our budgeting process.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure at the time that happens, Jeff will be asking you for additional information at that time. So, and that will normally take place in April, May, time to take.
Hopefully, by April, May, we will have left the contracts on both the crane and the new marine sail. And if the commission so desired, they could actually come out and see the progress that we're making, and we could probably, you know, have a little demonstration of what we're trying to do, and would welcome that opportunity, too.
Any questions for Ken from the commission? It's an exciting time. Nobody knows for sure how big the container-on-barge is going to be at this time. We're hoping it's going to be large. But the more material that comes up the river from New Orleans and Mobile and is offloaded here, then this just adds to our reputation as distribution center for this It could create a lot more jobs. It's something that could be a real plus for us, and I commend the Riverport for your vision on this thing because I think it'll be great.
Well, the fact that we're doing it and the fact that we still hope to obtain the foreign trade zone status along with several other adjoining counties, I think those things as a bullet point on any economic development summary sheet would be what people will be looking for.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're proceeding as we are. And we have certainly appreciated your support over the years for all the different things. And we've worked with you on several economic development projects, and the city has been a good partner, as well as the county.
Yeah, well, good. Well, Ken, keep up the good work. I'm sure you'll be hearing from Jeff, and you all can get together and talk and brief him on any information he needs. And the next commission will go through that process and decide whether this is something they can support or not.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham.
The Park Services Awards.
Well, if you'd been here, you would realize I already did that.
Sorry.
Ouch.
Um, no.
That's on my toes.
We did that. Pam made sure we did that.
Good.
Okay.
You're going to come back up here.
Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the reading of the minutes for November 13, 2012, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Motions, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents: Health Insurance Stop-Loss Agreement with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield; Health Insurance Agreement with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for Administrative Services; Letter of Award from Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railway Foundation for the Paducah Police Department; Junior Citizens Police Academy; Contract with Kenzie Lawn and Landscape for Grounds Maintenance for Approximately 130 City-Owned Properties; Board of Commissioners' Commission Meeting Notice of Cancellation for November 6, 2012; Barclay Regional Airport Authority Financial Statements for Years Ended June 30, 2012 and 2011; Bids: Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation; Aquatic Renovation Systems, Inc.; Bids for Construction of Home Located on 302 Harahan; Crawford Contracting; Brandon Owens Construction; DND Construction; Jim Steele Construction; Bids for Construction of Home Located at 1527 Monroe Street; Crawford Construction; Brandon Owens Construction; Jim Steele Construction; DND Construction; Bids for Construction of Home Located at 1621 Harrison Street; Crawford Construction; DND Construction; Jim Steele Construction.
Second.
All right. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Ordinances and adoptions, Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac Sales, Inc. for sale to the city of one new 2014 front-loading refuge collection truck for use by the solid waste collection system and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of McBride Mac, Inc. in the amount of $223,696.19 for sale to the city of one new 2014 front-loading refuge collection truck for use by the solid waste collection system. Said bid being in substantial compliance with bid specifications and as contained in the bid of McBride Mac Sales, Inc. of October 23, 2012. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with McBride Mac Sales, Inc. for said purchase of truck.
Second. Second.
Okay. We talked about this, pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Strategic Health Risk Advisor and Strategic Benefit Placement Services contract with Pillen Holland Financial Group to provide administration services for the city of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Pillen Holland Financial Group in the amount of $65,000 payable in four equal installments of $16,250 each for services pertaining to the administration of the city's public, city of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or the city's legal counsel. This contract is for the 2013 calendar year.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah accepting a 2012 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant Award for the Paducah Police Department and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $37,000 through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for a 2012 reimbursable grant award to purchase up to 14 handheld radios to be used by the Paducah Police Department. This award does not require a local match, a local cash match, or in-kind contribution. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security.
Second.
Okay. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinances introductions, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the negotiation after competitive sealed bidding and consummation of agreement for the Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project with Aquatic Renovation Systems, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $795,000, $795,930, and authorizing the mayor to execute the aforementioned agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Upon the corporation counsel giving final approval as to the legal form of the appropriate agreement, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute such agreements wherein the services of Aquatic Renovation Systems, Inc. are retained to furnish all the necessary labor, materials, equipment, tools, and services necessary for the renovation and rehabilitation of the Noble Park Pool for a sum not in excess of $795,930, the terms of which shall be in the form as attached as Exhibit A.
Second.
All right, Mr. Mark.
Well, this is going to be one of those other projects that takes us to next year's awards, I think. But this is our second go-around with this bid, and even with that, we still had to learn that we weren't able to force a square peg into a round hole. What we found out is that there, that the work that's going to be done on the primary portion of the pool is really a specialty, and there's not too many folks out there that are going to be doing it. And they really didn't want to do some of the concrete work or the spray-ground work. And you can tell, they're going to, they wanted to be compensated very well for those just in case, you know, they ran into trouble. So basically, what we did was reduce the budget to work that they really didn't want to do to the work that they wanted to do. And that part is what we're doing with this part of the budget. We will then go in, we've already got out the budget, or the bid, on the concession stand, which will be in in a couple of weeks, and then we'll bid the spray-ground out and some of the other work out separately. Plus, we're going to be doing a considerable amount of work in-house that is going to be doing some of the demolition.
Questions for Mark?
The original bid we had for this, Mark, is this going to come in a little under?
Overall, we're going to reduce that by, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $100,000 from over the very first bids we got.
And that's for the total package?
For the total package, yes. By doing it in-house. And plus, you could tell by the numbers that they just really weren't comfortable in doing some of that work. So they were covering themselves in the budget. So we took that out, and we're going to do a lot of that work ourselves.
And notice in the contract, there's a final completion date by May 10?
Substantial completion by May 1st, so we can get it filled and get folks trained. And by the 10th, they have to be out, and so we can get trained and get staff open and have the pool, water in the pool.
And then the $2,000 fine per day, per calendar day, would start on the 10th if they don't complete by that day?
Right.
Okay. Good job.
Yeah. I mean, this is something that is not going to be bright and shiny with lots of horns and whistles. It's just...
Well, not this portion of it.
Not this portion of it.
Although, we will have the new slide in this portion.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that this is something we had to do.
Correct.
So we have to, we have to get it done, and we have to spend the money so the people of Paducah will have a nice place to swim. But it's sometimes hard to spend money like that because most people aren't even going to know we did anything by the time...
It's quality of life.
It is quality of life.
Well, it's a safety and security situation.
And more safety, yeah. I agree with you. So, but it needs to be done, and we're doing it, and I congratulate you for sticking with it.
Well, we'll be back a couple more times about this.
Well, and I think it's something, too, that, you know, we had to decide, you know, we can't keep limping along with it the way it was and expending the extra cash that it was costing in leakage and...
Well, we never knew which day that the pool, you know, if it was going to just, when the big bang was going to happen with it. And so this we will avoid.
Mark, let, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I was just going to ask.
Hey, rep, go ahead.
Yes, Your Honor. Just to let the public know, what kind of usage, what kind of annual numbers do you have for that swimming pool that...
We are 300 a day plus on that, so I'm not sure how many days we're open a year. Six, 65, 75? And we are hoping to be open longer with the opening early again this year over the Labor Day weekend, which we haven't been able to do for the past couple of years because we were needing to shorten it. So we'll add a few more days to it also this year.
Around 25,000 people a year then?
When you start adding those up, yeah.
And Red Cross swim classes?
We do our swim classes. We, in fact, we've got folks who are interested in helping us with some of those for folks who don't know how to swim, and we've got a few things happening on the line that'll help us next year. We, in fact, we've got folks who are interested in helping us with some of those for folks who don't know how to swim. And we've got a few things happening on the line that'll help us next year.
Yeah. Well, we're getting a new pool and from the inside out.
Exactly.
The functional part has to be there. And that pool has always served its purpose. And it, I mean, with that kind of volume, you know, it gets a lot of use. It's a lot of wear and tear. And finally, we decided to fix that. And it's going to cost, and we're handling that. So I'm excited for all the folks, I'm 25,000 folks to, that use that pool. We're getting a new pool. So that's exciting stuff.
Well, and it's been done about every 20 years. I mean, that pool was built in the late 1930s. So you do have to do a little maintenance on it occasionally.
Is that a WPA project or?
WPA, CCC, all the conglomerate letters, yes. It was one of those. That's our last WPA or that vintage building that we have in the park also. The bath house.
Wow.
Does our architect want to speak on that? Anything you'd like to add?
I think you all mentioned, Mr. Graham mentioned it pretty well. You're getting a new pool. And as far as bells and whistles, I think the patrons will notice the new building that will be put out there on the site. The new liner and new gutter system will also add to the aesthetics of the site and fix some of the concrete spots out there. It's going to, I think it'd be a definite benefit. And then with the addition of the Spray Park, it's going to be very nice.
Yeah. I agree. I wasn't being negative. I was just making the statement that it's not like
There is more than just the underground pipeline.
Yeah. You're right. You're right.
The city will see that.
You're right. If it wasn't a worthwhile project, we wouldn't be spending the money. So that's good. Well, thank you for your good work.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, we have Project B here. I think, Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Crawford Contracting for construction of a new home at 302 Harahan Boulevard and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Crawford Contracting in the amount of $127,800 for the construction of a new home at 302 Harahan Boulevard as part of the 2012 home project and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay, Steve.
This is the last step in the process before we start construction. Hopefully, the beginning of next month, all three of these next homes have pre-qualified homeowners. If you remember the last meeting, we did get approval for the construction loan to actually construct these, so we're excited to get started.
Yeah. It's an exciting project. Really is. Any questions for Steve? Pretty self-explanatory. Okay.
What are the boundaries again for Fountain Avenue development?
They're from 13th Street to Fountain Avenue, from Park Avenue to the alley between Jefferson and Monroe Street.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Brandon Owens Construction for construction of a new home at 1527 Monroe Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Brandon Owens Construction in the amount of $137,887 for the construction of a new home at 1527 Monroe Street as part of the 2012 home project and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Now, we accepted Brandon Owens and that wasn't the low
That's correct. Urban Renewal did review all these bids. And although Crawford Contracting was the lowest in this instance because they awarded another house within the Fountain Avenue, and we had three pre-qualified bidders, we wanted to get to work on all three of them at the same time. So they wanted, they suggested or made a recommendation to the commission that this contract be awarded to Brandon Owens.
Got you. Makes sense. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Jim Steel Construction for construction of a new home at 1621 Harrison Street and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah approves a recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of Jim Steel Construction in the amount of $118,138 for the construction of a new home at 1621 Harrison Street as part of the 2012 home project and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Steve on that? I think we all are excited about this project. There's a lot of homes going up. We just signed some papers today to allow us to do more. I think everybody, I know Jeff and I and Steve have been out there and I know you all have been out there. I think to the future commission that as soon as can be done, we need to start putting new curbs and gutters and sidewalks on some of those streets. And I know it's going to be a slow process, but as Steve said today, when people see that there's got new curbs and new gutters and out there, then they know that the city is committed and it just, it just makes it a nicer project. So Jeff, you'd mentioned that as we talked many times, and I know you all will get around to it when you can, but there's an awful lot of work that needs to be done down there.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. All right. City Managers' Report?
I'll mention a couple of things. Recall, Commissioner, that in the budget this year, and the new approved expenditure of up to $100,000 to complete a building analysis for City Hall. This building is 50 years old. We previously had commissioned and obtained a structural analysis, so we need to complete total building analysis to include HVAC and roof and various other components of a 50-year-old building that's been under heavy use the whole time. So I expect to have that contract before you to approve with a successful consultant by the end of the year. And hopefully, not too far into the new calendar year, we'll have some information on what it is that we're looking at, probably in a priority order for this building to be renovated. Rick has used the word restored in the scope of services. I'm not sure if it's quite to that level. I think renovated is maybe, maybe the one we'll go with. But it's a very critical building to sustain the ability of the city to function and operate going forward for the next 50 years. So we are moving ahead with what we did in the budget and hopefully, we'll have some very good information for the new commission to look at early in its term about this vital part of the city's infrastructure. I'll mention as well, HR Director Medford and I have been looking at some software products for instituting a citywide performance appraisal system. We've pretty much completed looking at various products out there and we're in the process of determining which of those is the most appealing to us. We need, we have some work to do internally with that, but we anticipate moving forward with an implementation on something sometime within the next 30 to 60 days so that we can get that very, very critical component of our employee management system in place in a citywide standardized basis so that we can give additional meeting integrity and so forth to our internal HR system. So I'm really excited about the, it's kind of like what Bill said about the swimming pool aspects of it. Something like that doesn't really stand out as being, you know, shiny or glossy, but it's a critically important internal function of the employee organization. So I'm happy that we're taking that next step forward in the process. That was begun with our consultant over two years ago now, and Cindy is on task and showing good leadership in that. So that's all I have.
Well, I have to say that when we woke up this morning and saw the newspaper, we all saw the news about the settlement with the Convention Center and recovering most of the money. I want to commend Jeff on his leadership on that, working with Convention Center Board. And it's a long process, but we had a successful outcome and everybody wins. So Jeff, thank you for your strong leadership.
Well, I appreciate that. But I think in the same breath, we, the City Commission showed, I think, a lot of strength and resolve and foresight in its willingness to unilaterally commission the investigation at the request of the Convention Center. That wasn't one of the easiest decisions I know you've ever made, but I think it's proven to be a very correct decision with the outcome that I think that study had a heck of a lot to do with bringing about.
Yeah. And in the convention, you got to thank the board. They took that on while they were being strongly criticized by an awful lot of people. And they did the right thing and it turned out correctly. So appreciate, appreciate the board of the Convention Center very much. Commissioner comments?
I'd just like to say that Friday afternoon at 5:30, we're turning the lights on at Noble Park. Let's, everybody come out and see the lights come on.
Yeah.
And then also, that's Black Friday, so come downtown and shop and eat. It'll be a fun time. At the mall too, but my heart's downtown.
Downtown, yeah. I will say that as we remembered that last week, I believe it was Dr. Vizi came and explained to us that her scope with the new art school was much larger than she thought it would be going in. You've got three new buildings basically going up, one right after another, and that's not counting the eventual kitchens building that will be renovated at some point. So she is trying to get Senator Bob Leeper to open the budget and up the authorization. So even though they're not borrowing from the state, they need that authorization in order to spend that much money on the art school. Because of that, she came to us and asked us to extend our request, our support from three years at $75,000 to five years at $75,000. We all know that one commission cannot pledge another commission to support something. But I do think from the comments that were made last week after she spoke, I think all of us want this project to be successful. And with your all's permission, I thought that I would write a letter to Dr. Vizi that she can take to Senator Leeper saying that this commission supports that $75,000 for an additional two years, knowing that each commission has to support that when the time comes. So with your all's support on that, I will write that letter and get that to her.
Yeah, I support that, Mayor. I think it's essential that we be supportive. What happens at the college is really affects the entire community and it's such an economic driver for this entire, not just city and county, but region really. And the enrollment in the art school is kind of exploded and it's very supportive of the lower-town arts community and the millions of dollars worth of investment they've made in lower-town and provides opportunities for artists and for students who aspire to be artists in all the different areas that you have an opportunity to. So I think, I think it's a project worthy of our support.
Thank you all very much. I will get that done. Any public comments? There is no executive session, so at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. I hope everybody has a very nice Thanksgiving.